to order on this Tuesday, September 27, 2022. The board has met in closed session. Item one, conference with labor negotiators. Just a report from staff and item two confidential minutes were approved. Could you all join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. And we'll go on to public matters not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff under committee for report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. There is a three-minute time limit and public comments. Anyone? Heather, anyone on Zoom? Come on up, Dominic.
Not at this time.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you. Might want to give one to our board clerk for Supervisor Axe too. He's, and I'll note that before Dominic speaks, Supervisor Axe is attending the meeting via Zoom. He's recovering nicely from recent surgery.
Hold on just for a second. I'll try it again. Dominic Moreno, Sutter Creek Fire District. A couple things. I sent a letter to the board on two occasions over the last couple months concerning the 118 map changes that were promised by votes of this board to fix, have been not corrected for the last three years. I'd like to know the status of that request. Haven't heard anything on it.
That's the CalFire issue more than anything, right?
Oh, no, it's actually, the board voted to fix it. And then there was promises made from this board.
Well, I think the board voted to fix it and then CalFire made decisions based on their dispatch, what they felt were appropriate.
Which we find out today that aren't. So I think we still need to look into this subject going forward.
Yeah, I don't think it's just a CalFire issue because the board does give CalFire directions and where different fire agencies respond.
We don't control how they operate Camino though.
No. Actually, they're a contracted agency. So usually when you have a contract, you can actually put conditions and things in it. So just, just like to find out the status then. Second thing, grand jury report on the fuel mitigation. I was in front of the board when the defensible space ordinance was adopted. As you remember, I recommended the board not adopt it since a mirrored state law that was already in place. I've asked the board many times to send a letter to CalFire, ask to fulfill the functions of their mission and inspect the properties located in Amador County for compliance with state law. I've included a chart for you that's put out by LAO showing the deficiencies in inspections. On another note, in the grand jury report, the smaller fire agencies in this county are more efficient, conduct more inspections, and have better ordinances to deal with fire issues in their areas. This board should ask for their input for making ordinances that will be very impactful for the citizens in the county. Third, I read again about how this board has handed out more money to one fire agency in the county. This board represents 100% of the citizens of Amador County. Over the last decade, this board has given over $3 million to one agency that represents roughly 50% of the population. While the other agencies representing roughly 50% of the population received about $50,000 total. This board is supposed to represent all of us. Also, that doesn't include dispatching. This is money above, beyond dispatching. Third, Rob Withrow has been telling people that he's the new deputy chief for APD and soon might be the chief. As a CalFire division chief, Withrow has a history. He has shown up on calls screaming at individuals that he was going to take his resources away from an act of fire because a letter was sent to his supervisor. He was instrumental in making the 118 map and trying to defend the map by blaming first the wind of Vista Ranche Ria and then Lafco. We finally found out after a while that was taking money, the object was to take money from other fire agencies. Prior to Chief Lenkenhein being promoted as unit chief and putting Rob on the shelf, Rob appeared in this chamber stating how bad local fire chiefs were and made accusations that were misguided and were refuted. He used his power to harm agencies like Iona Jackson by not hiring them to fill stations, coverages in the county. He disapproved Pine Grove Camp crews working in some areas because he didn't like individuals. I also would like to thank Supervisor Nedo as an individual, Supervisor Nedo, an individual who also worked at Pine Grove Camp, came in front of this board last year and made comments concerning me. Brian was the only board member who refuted the charges that were made and proven false. Also, let's not forget the Jackson fire chief. Jackson's fire chief, the first female chief in Amador County, was fired earlier this year. She wasn't fired for doing a good job, wasn't fired for straightening out the finances, she wasn't fired for hiring additional fire personnel, she wasn't fired for bringing grants into Jackson, wasn't fired for increasing the engine coverage in Jackson, wasn't fired for being the lead grant writer for Amador County fire agencies. Why was she fired? Everyone in this room knows why she was fired. I won't spell it out. After not supporting him, Rob sent letters con questioning her qualifications, even though her ability exceeds his. Individuals showed up and lashed out to the fire chief, and next thing we know it, the first female fire chief in Amador County is canned because she did her job. The letter dispatched you the story on this and then everyone went stealth. This board might want, might have some ties to this, who knows? Maybe we should investigate that. Thank you very much.
You for your opinions. Any other public comment? And we will move on. Oh, Dr. Custer?
Thank you. I'm here today.
Can you, just for the record, state your name, please?
Yes. Orral Custer. Do you need my address?
No, that's good. Thank you.
I'm here to read some material from the New California State. So it'll be just probably three or four minutes.
You have three minutes, and that's what I'm going to hold you to because I see we have other speakers too. I would warn you in the future, it would be better to summarize this material and present the documents to our board clerk. That's what most people usually do.
This material is summarized. "We, the people of the state of New California, notice to all Californians, first declaration of truth. Citizens of New California have decided to remedy the abuse of power by the government of California by exercising their right to form a new state provided in the United States Constitution, Article 4, Sections 3 and 4. We are determined to live under a state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States." It's a declaration of tyranny, violation of the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, Clause 1. The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government. Today, California is in a state of free fall at all levels. This free fall has been orchestrated over the last 170 years by socialist and communist, and we're now nearing the end of their socialist communist plan that clearly demonstrates a design to reduce the United States citizens living in California under absolute despotism. Today, this plan was, has eliminated the three branches of government, created a mono-party legislature which has enabled and empowered the rise of pusillanimous governor-turned-dictator. Pusillanimous governor whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be elected governor of a free people. Likewise, elected, appointed, and regional officials of the state of California whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant are unfit to be elected, appointed, and regional officials of a free people. The history of the present pusillanimous governor of California, the past globalist governor of California, and other officials of the state of California is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct, in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over the state of California. We, the citizens of the state of New California, have petitioned.
Please wrap up your presentation.
I will wrap it up right now. "We, the citizens of this new state of California, have petitioned for redress of grievances in the most humble terms, reading a total of 190 grievances of county courthouse locations within the borders of New California State during the course of four years. Nor have we, the citizens of this state of New California, been wanting in attentions to our California brethren. But our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, gentlemen. A board. Chris Strong from Island, California. I'll continue on with the second declaration of truth. "We, the people of the state of New California, notice to all Californians, second declaration of truth. Citizens of New California have decided to remedy the abuse of power by the government of California by exercising their right to form a new state provided in the United States Constitution, Article 4, Sections 3 and 4. We are determined to live under a state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States."
It's a declaration of tyranny, violation of the United States Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, Clause 1. "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government." Today, California is in a state of free fall at all levels. This free fall has been orchestrated over the last 170 years by socialist and communist, and we're now nearing the end of their socialist communist plan that clearly demonstrates a design to reduce the United States citizens living in California under absolute despotism. Today, this plan was, has eliminated the three branches of government, created a mono-party legislature which has enabled and empowered the rise of pusillanimous governor-turned-dictator. Pusillanimous governor whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be elected, appointed, and regional officials of a free people. The history of the present pusillanimous governor of California, the past globalist governor of California, and other officials of the state of California
We are determined to live under a state government in the United States of America and under the Constitution of the United States." Declaration of Invasion, violation of the United States Constitution, Article Four, Section Four, Clause Two, and shall protect each of them against invasion. The state of California governor and government officials working alongside leaders of foreign governments that are averse to the United States of America facilitate and encourage the flood of illegal foreign nationals into California. The state of California, in open defiance of federal law, has declared itself a sanctuary for all persons illegally entering the state. This sanctuary status acts as a magnet for known criminals and terrorists who desire to harm citizens of California and of the United States. This status brings human trafficking and drug smuggling activities to California, endangering the lives and safety of the citizens. The state of California has failed to prevent this invasion, which is in direct violation of the Constitution of the United States, Article Four, Section Four, that guarantees protection from evasion. The on-the-ground violence and lawlessness all across the southern border of the United States caused by cartels and gangs is extensive, well-documented, and persistent. It satisfies the definition of actually invaded and invasion under the Constitution of the United States. Today, California is in a state of freefall at all levels, like we just heard. This freefall has been orchestrated over the last hundred and seventy years by socialist and communist regimes, and now we're nearing the end of their socialist communist plan that clearly demonstrates a design to reduce the United States citizens living in California under utter despotism. Today, this plan has eliminated the three branches of government, created a mono-party legislature which has enabled and empowered the rise of pusillanimous governor-turned-dictator. Abdication of authority. By betrayal, betrayal by the sitting pusillanimous socialist governor slash dictator of California, the mono-party legislature and local elected officials is, is evidence of abdication of their responsibilities of authority and sovereignty over the citizens of the United States and, uh, living in California State. Thank you.
Thank you. You? Any other public comments? Professor Brown?
Yeah, I wanna thank American Legion for hosting another, um, blood drive yesterday. Bloodsuckers got me for another court. It's very much a, a needed thing that, you know, please, anybody that can or will, uh, donate blood, please do it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You? Comments?
No.
There are none, we'll move on to rule of the agenda and item three E. We'll have a slight change in the last, uh, bullet point. The end of the sentence funds into the account with the already allocated funding at the appropriate time rather than as she deems appropriate.
Approve with that change?
Second. Moved and second it to approve the regular agenda. Heather, roll call, please.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Okay, most carries five zero. Onto approval of items on the consent, consent agenda, item four M, Environmental Health Department, and this, uh, revolves around the Amador County Uniform Program Agency or Coupa Inspection and Enforcement Plan will be pulled and brought back on a regular agenda at the next meeting. I think it, looking at the agenda, that's always been a, um, item that the board wants to keep control over. It looks like we don't, not gonna have as much with the state having mandatory rules that have to be put in place, but it will be brought back. So, with that change, can I have approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Moved and second it to approve the consent agenda, roll call.
Thank you, Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
All right, thank you, most carries five zero. Go on to our regular agenda, item three A, discussion of possible action relative to proposed Shenandoah Road improvements. And, uh, Mr. Vila, good morning.
Board, uh, Richard Vila, Public Works Director. Just in summary, back in March, we discussed, uh, proposed improvements for Shenandoah Road, uh, specifically section approximately, beginning approximately half a mile past the Fiddletown Road intersection to just past the Lower Steiner Road intersection, a length of approximately three point seven five miles. The, the board provided direction to, to move forward, to, 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 um, to, um, prepare for, uh, improvements on that section. Uh, we talked about, um, because of the length and propose, you know, pro, cost that we could be running into, that we could break that project up into a base bid, which would be the first three miles, and then an alternate bid for the last three quarter miles, so that if we get, uh, favorable bid figures, that we could, uh, do the alternate, otherwise we could, uh, sit with the base. 'Cause the base bid, which runs up to about Bell Road, um, is the most critical part of that road section. Um, and just, you know, it, it, there's an attachment on, in your package with a map that kinda lays out where those areas are to kinda familiarize, get yourself oriented with that. Um, it's a pretty aggressive project, a large project, um, I don't know, you know, if the county has had projects like this in the past with this magnitude, so it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, certainly an undertaking.
You have had projects like that, been a long time ago.
Yeah. Um, in June, um, through an engineering task order, we entered into contract with Bennett Engineering, um, deliverables, including a memorandum of reasonable alternatives, plans and specs, and enginement, an estimate for the base bid and bid alternate. Um, included in their, uh, work would be a geotechnical investigation. Uh, there was a, uh, I think it was twenty borings that were done along this, this road section to get us a, a good idea of what kind of road conditions we have as far as existing pavement thickness, base thickness, and, and, and subbed made, um, makeup. Uh, and that helps us to, to make a good assessment on that, on the existing condition of the road and to guide us on what kind of improvements are necessary, uh, for this road.
What those borings find, you know, roughly, off to, off top of your head?
I don't have that off the top of my head, um, it, they varied. Um, there's pavement thickness there of anywhere from four to six inches, I believe. Their base material varies from, I think there's some spots where there isn't base material, up to areas that have four to six inches, so it varies as you, as you go along. Um, not knowing how the, the history of the road, it probably was built in different phases, and maybe started as a one-lane road and widened to a two-lane road, and so, y, there's a lot of, uh, uh, variation that could have occurred during the various stages of construction of the road that exists today. Um, and, you know, over the course of time, uh, the, the function of this road has increased. Uh, there's a, there's a lot more traffic there than it was in previous year. We've had a lot of, um, development with the, with the wineries along this road, um, so we have that kind of commercial-type traffic. We get a lot of, uh, uh, people who, who come and visit the wineries and such, so it's probably, you know, the road has grown from probably a local road a number of years ago to a major collector now. So, uh, when we look to do improvements, we wanna make sure that we, um, make those improvements with that usage in mind. Um, so, um, based on that, you know, based on the geotechnical report, um, we feel that the structural, um, cross-section of the road should be increased from where it is now so that we can ensure, um, when we do improvements, that they're gonna last for the, for the life that they're intended to, to, um, be. Um...
Richard, with that in mind.
Yes.
You and I have talked about the, um, the truck traffic that's on the road now because of the demolition work, but with the, the tree removal also from the Calder fire. So, that brings in another dynamic when you're talking about the, um, pressure that's going to be put on that road in the future. Even if we improve it to, to these standards, it's just going to, uh, fall apart that much quicker, isn't it?
Well, that's, you know, that's certainly a possibility. The, the current traffic that's on there, um, I would say is a, a short term, but I, you know, we're trying to look into and find out how long that's gonna last, um, whether it's gonna be six months, two years, or whatever, and, you know, that, that does, uh, bring into play. I don't see that being a long-term, you know, forever type of situation where you have all the logging activity up, you know, in, in, in Eldorado County coming through, uh, using this road. But it's certainly happening now, and it's, it's helped accelerate, uh, the deterioration of the, of the current pavement in that road.
I'd like to address that just, just a little bit. Um, yeah, 'cause what you have is you have Sierra Pacific and a few small private landowners in the Forest Service, um, basically going in there and salvaging timber. I'd say the Calder fire cleanup is done. Um, you'll see people building houses up there, that's not a great big impact. As far as the logging, I think you'll see a pretty big chunk of it done by the end of the summer, but there'll still be quite a bit of it going on even next year. And I guess, um, the question I'm having is, if you, especially if we pick option number three, which is, you know, twelve-inch full-depth reclamation with cement and a hot overlay, you know, what would be the damage of waiting, uh, maybe an additional year? I know the roads will get rougher, but I, I think, I think, so you have this summer, and if you wait, did like maybe late summer of the year after, I would think most of your salvage logging would be done by then. So, you've got this summer, and then next summer, by then, I think it'd be probably eighty, ninety percent of it would probably be done.
Problem is that, based on the report, we can't wait too long because of, the harvest starts.
That's true.
Yeah, according to the vintners, they, they want it done before harvest starts, logically.
The only thing is, if we do it, you know, early, early next summer, you're probably gonna have a lot of truck traffic the rest of that summer on that road.
Yeah, or you push it, uh, to spring of twenty-four.
And it, it may be a fight, especially if we're doing like, if you do the complete reclamation, yeah, we can patch the road a little bit, it's gonna get rougher and rougher and rougher, but if you're gonna go through and grind it all up, it's not gonna really matter. Um, if we're not doing that, then it's probably more, probably more important to maybe do it before it gets torn up, the base gets torn up too bad and starts moving on you a lot.
Yeah, it's your district. I mean, I'm hearing complaints on the road up there from some of the vintners right now.
Also, it's a real prob, I never said it's not a problem. All, all I'm just looking at is when do we do it, 'cause you're gonna have a, probably a lot more log, logging truck traffic on there.
That's why I asked the question, though, is that if we have, if we fix it and have a year or two of truck traffic, uh, do you think the road will, will stay at that stable level, though, and it won't deteriorate too much?
I think, you know, we, and we can go through the, the different options that are presented, but Supervisor Neto, um, referenced the full-depth reclamation, and I think with that option, it would give you the, the, um, the best structural integrity over the, for the whole improvement.
Yeah, it would, you'd probably take the truck traffic pretty well, but when you get that much traffic, it's gonna have some impact on any road, I would think.
Supervisor Neto, do you also agree that if they started working on the road, they'd go fifty and eighty-eight and stay off of the logging trucks, the majority of them?
As long as you're working on it, but once you fix it and make it nice, they're all gonna go on that road.
Well, but this is probably a couple-month project near the end of summer, and I've heard too that by the end of next summer, they'll be done up there, the majority of the salvage logging.
In, in the end of next summer, yeah.
Next summer, right.
So, that means if we fix it early, the, they're gonna run, they're gonna have a lot, lot of traffic.
If we fix it next summer before, we have to be done before harvest season, that was one of the requests.
Yeah.
It would, and they're going off, the, probably sixty or seventy percent of that truck traffic would've gone on fifty to Lincoln or eighty over to Standard. They're not gonna go through there with it, when the road construction is going on, 'cause it's-
Probably not, true, true.
It'll wear out the state.
I mean, I'd like to fix it, I'd like to fix it today, but, you know, we're, we're-
Yeah. Yeah, the, what we're looking to do is have the work scheduled for June and July.
Of next year.
Next year. Or, or, in other words, start after Memorial Day and finish before Labor Day, preferably by, by mid-August. And I think that's a, you know, even though it's a long project, once you get a contractor in there, I think, you know, that, that, uh, eight to twelve weeks should be more than sufficient to, to finish the project, unless you run into some really squirrely field conditions.
I think they had harvest going in August this year, so you're gonna run into the, um, the grape harvest.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'd like to shoot for a, a mid-August completion.
Right.
On that.
And it was, it was early this year, too, as I was told. And I think what Pat said has, has some truth, I mean, maybe if you're working there, the trucks probably would wanna go a different route, and so, that means that push, that almost like maybe the end of summer, by then they're getting pretty close, majority'd probably be getting done.
That was my feeling on that, too.
And we can cheat that start date a little bit, um, you know, I don't, I don't think the, um, the wineries have some events in the spring, but I think by mid-May, I think those are all complete.
That, that's what I shoot for.
Anyway, we've got three different options that, that the engineer has come up with. Uh, I have Carlton Allen with Bennett Engineering is here, you know, he can kinda explain what those options are and, and, and talk about the benefits and, and drawbacks to those. Um, I think the reason why I wanted to bring this here is so that you guys can see what's being proposed, and, um, you know, there's, there's, um, obviously there's some potential budget implications with that, so I want to be upfront, get that out early so that, you know, we don't have this surprise four months down the road when we bid this, oh my gosh, we didn't expect it to be this much, so, or, or what have you. Or maybe it'll be, we'll have some favorable bids and it won't be an issue, but, um, I-
But I wanted to say is that I'm in favor of myself of, of option three, but I wanna say upfront that I've seen one of the companies that has done it, and they've, I've watched their presentation and, and, uh, everything else, and I think it's, for that specific road, it would be the, the greatest option that I have seen as far as long-term, you know, capabilities to keep that road, 'cause we know we're always gonna have truck traffic, you know, on that road, and it needs to be able to withstand the, um, the capabilities of, of the future, and I truly think that option three would be a, a great advantage.
Um, why don't we have Mr. Bennett come up and, is it Mr. Bennett, is that right? Or is it?
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Allen, sorry.
Bennett Engineering.
Bennett Engineering, have him talk about these. I, only two I'd like to see is two and three, the differences there, so I think it'd be good to go through a discussion on that. Uh, Mr. Allen, thank you.
Thank you, board. If we could bring the slides back up.
Can you pull that microphone up just a hair? Thank you.
Is that better?
Lot better.
All right, very good. So, option two, um, would be a, a cold-in-place recycling where we would use that existing, so average, we've got about six inches of existing asphalt out there, on about four inches of aggregate base, uh, as Richard mentioned, some of it, there isn't base out there, um, but, uh, average about six inches of, of HMA, and, and then, so we would go through that six inches, uh, cold-in-place recycle it, so there's a, a train of machinery that goes through, grinds it up, adds some either foamed asphalt or emulsion to it, creates, uh, doesn't add any heat, that's why it's called cold-in-place, uh, creates, uh, an asphalt-like structure. Um, it's not as strong as traditional asphalt, which is why we, uh, cap it with two inches- Um it's not as strong as traditional asphalt, which is why we uh cap it with two inches of HMA on top, conventional hot mix uh overlay on top of that um to provide um more uh capacity and and wearing course for that option. Uh but no, we would still have base repairs in uh strategic locations identified where we're seeing uh a lot of rutting or or potholing and base failures. So we would go through and repair about ten to fifteen percent of the subbase on the road as it gets squishy and um the impacts from the trucks.
Now, does that include you in the estimates?
Yes, sir. So both uh option one and option two include fifteen percent uh replacement of or repair of of the base section through through the road. Um and that's why um we would have uh a moderate maintenance cost ongoing with with option two, because there would still be eighty-five percent of the base that is currently untreated. So you know, every uh so often we'd have to go back and fix the the potholes that that develop on those untreated sections. Or with option three on the on the next slide, we're creating a a brand new base section with um full depth reclamation. So we go through and grind up everything, uh use all the existing aggregate and asphalt and add a little cement to it. Uh creates a a stronger base section and then we're and then we come back and top it with, I believe, what do we say? Uh four and a half inches of of asphalt on.
Question on that?
Yes, sir.
Isn't there some areas there's no base?
Yes.
What do you do there?
So it you vary the cement content, so there still is asphalt on those. So you we still have some the aggregates and and strength from the the asphalt there. Um and then you can vary the the amount of cement that you add in those sections.
And that'll compensate probably like the clay you might run into or the sand and okay.
I like that three option because of the uh project attributes, least future maintenance, and then uh minimal impacts for driveway and roadway conforms. But the one I really like is the profile, that it doesn't raise the profile. Um there's a lot of traffic going on and off that roadway. And what I've seen on those projects where you have to where it raises the profile, it it makes it a lot tougher for people sometimes.
And that that goes to the um reduced impacts with the the conforms and the driveways and the amount of of driveways we have there and and commercial driveways, you know, we'd have to go go back quite a ways to bring that profile up to to, you know, if we were gonna add.
Richard's saying is absolutely correct. I mean, look in Dry Town, there's a sign there, Caltrans fixed and created this mess. And they've they've raised that road year after year, and now they some driveways you hardly can get in in and out of them.
Put a four-wheel drive to get out of your driveway.
Oh, yeah, if you can.
How far are you required? If you went with option two where you raised the profile, how far are you required to go into driveways? Just to to the area so it levels off?
Yeah, we we would try to keep it around ten percent. Profile grade on the driveway, max, um just to ease that, so it's not a big a big hump up on onto the road.
Yeah, being a commercial, a lot of commercial activity up there, um that's why I like the option three. Profiles are a big issue. Any other questions for Mr. Allen?
No.
What's the timeline to do between option two and option three as far as getting the actual work then?
Option two is a little faster, uh just cause it's one less step. Um you don't have to wait. So with with the uh option three with the FDR, you go through pulverize everything, mix the cement in, and then it's got to cure uh for about a day. Um and then you can come back and microcrack it and pave it. Or with the the CIR, um you can do the cold in place recycling and then pave it the next day. So there's a a slight um speed advantage to to option two, uh but not to.
What about ac- excuse me, Supervisor Brown, what about access during that um during the uh?
The FDR process?
Yeah.
So uh depending on the on the traffic residential driveways, we can allow, you can allow uh light passenger vehicles uh on the FDR as soon as it's down and compacted. Um or the the contractor can plate. Uh we can, we'll put it in the the technical specifications once we talk to to all of the property owners on on their access. Uh you can put steel plate on top of it to spread the load, so it doesn't affect the base. Or we can also at the driveways, look at doing a full depth HMA plug, just do all asphalt there. So there's no time for curing or or anything like that. And it's it's a much faster uh, you can get that done in about.
As as we're talking, it's still a lot of wineries up there and, you know, we don't wanna refuse people access to their to the wineries.
Yeah, so either do, uh it'd be about a four hour closure usually to to do that driveway to get everything out and and then repaved.
Right.
Um or we could plate it um with with steel plates.
There'll be uh coordination with all the all the uh residents and.
Definitely.
And wineries, okay.
I I think if you had a a day with light traffic, I don't think that'd be the end of the world. Um I think you start putting in plates and full depth asphalt, you're you're in a cost up pretty substantial, I'd think.
Supervisor Axe has a question. Go ahead, Frank.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um so I guess you're looking at a year from now to to do this, but um the estimates that you have, how much are those going to change? Do you think?
I wish I wish we knew. Uh if if we knew that, that would be uh that would be good. There is a, we have a twenty percent contingency in that number to account for a a couple of things. A, cost of potential cost increases um with with inflation coming out. And then all of the I I I I J money, I I J A money uh coming out is also has a potential to increase some of the costs because it's gonna increase the the demand for asphalt and cement and and rock um with the increased construction um the with the federal funds. Uh so there's a little contingency in there for that, uh as well as um some of the other unknown design issues. We haven't gotten fully into into the into the design.
Okay, thank you.
The board questions? Um thank you, Mr. Allen. I'm gonna ask for public comment at this time. And hearing see none, anyone on Zoom?
Not at this time.
And we'll take it back to the board. Mr. Vila, you, what is your recommendation on this? We have the money, it sounds like, to do, uh we will have the money to do number three.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the difference in costs, at least potential, there um there's the increment is not that great. And I think for the cost of that increment, you get a lot better product. Um this is a, just out of um, just for point of reference, um we just are finishing up a a section on Buena Vista Road that we um did some reconstruction there. It's about a half a mile. And we bid it out as a conventional reconstruction. Dig it out, take all the material, bring in uh, you know, a a big lift of rock and then rebuild the road section. The contractor came to us and asked if we would entertain doing a full depth reclamation down there. And they would be able to do it at the same cost that they bid the as they bid the job. And so it would be, and the benefit to them was they can do it a lot quicker. And obviously, you know, time is money for a contractor. And so um we went ahead and 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 accepted that. And so that the pro- process that was, we just finished down there. And yeah, after after that uh, after they do that full depth reclamation, it can be driven on the next day. And um it's it's, I think it's, we're gonna have a pretty good product down there.
You can't win though. I I had people complain, it used to be my district, I had people constantly complaining about it. Now they're starting, they, when they started the project, I had somebody say, why are you doing that? It's gonna, it's already a speedway.
Well, that's the problem. When you fix a road, people will drive faster, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um we we, you know, when the road's not in too good a condition, we have built-in speed bumps.
Sometimes you just can't win, yeah.
No, um so, yeah, I, you know, for the increment, I think that's definitely the way to go. But, you know, there there is a dollar amount attached to that. And um, you know, for this project, initially it was looking to use the the rural twenty proceeds we got, PG rural twenty proceeds. Um and we, there's about one point seven I see available to do that. Um and obviously this, you know, our estimates are are exceeding that. Um there is a source of funds, there's another two hundred thousand dollars that the county secured through ACTC. Um it's a, it was uh available through a Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Act. So it's, there's money through during the pandemic. So there's another two hundred thousand we can put on this project in addition to the rural twenty proceeds. But if the estimates come true as what we see, um we will be sh- short. So, you know, we'll have to tap into, I would say, uh next year's SB one money when we go to budget for our SB one. We can have the balance of that of that project cost as a component. Cause we should, when we're preparing the SB one um program, we'll, this project should be already bid out, so we should know what our numbers are. Now, the the estimates that are here that you saw on the slides are for the 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 we we talked about base bid the first three miles. Um so unless we get really good numbers, which you never know. Um I've been surprised at a couple of our bids and 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 the numbers we get for asphalt. Um you think they're gonna be high and sometimes someone comes in with a low number. Um we can make that decision, you know, at that time.
Well, this, the basic, this should be going all from the Fiddletown-Chandl intersection roughly up to Bell Road. That's what these numbers are for.
Yeah, actually, we're gonna start about a half a mile past that intersection. And I just, I'm glad you brought that up because you're thinking, well, why are we gonna leave a gap? Um cause, you know, we finished that intersection of, you know, several years ago. But we went out and looked at the the road that, there's a section there that's in pretty good shape. And it wouldn't, to me, it wouldn't be wise to go and tear it up and and repave it just for a a continuity sake. I mean, that, you know, this stuff's expensive and we might as well apply it to the the section of the road that needed the most.
So, Richard, if I'm following along with you, we got one point seven and a possible two hundred thousand. So we'd be a million one short if we did option three with the alternate. And our SB one commitment for next year is probably two point two billion, million?
Uh that's close, that'd be close.
So it would take half of next year's money for that project.
Yeah, if you wanted to do the whole shooting match, yes.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
I guess um another question I'd have is you're starting at um oh marker oh point seven five. There's a real ugly se- section right there. Is it including that when you make that right-hand turn? Um probably like maybe three hundred, three hundred yards before Yunn's Winery? If you're if you're heading up Shandale Valley Road? There's like, there's a house right there in the corner on the left. It should it should include that, cause there's there's a real ugly area right there, which is starting to ripple.
I I can't picture exactly what you're talking about, but I I'm guessing that it should because as we went and evaluated the sections, um that first section was pretty good. And then if I recall correctly, the evaluation of the next section was, it dropped off dramatically as far as conditions.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we'd be covering.
Look at the map, it looks like it's included. It's right about on that corner at at the marker oh point seven five, that's right about the area. And then also, I've talked to you about that, about the bridge, that one hole that keeps coming back. By the um, by it used to be old Reinhardt's Old Foundry. There's there's just an, it'd be on the east side of the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
There's, that's something that should be looked at if if we're gonna do this, cause um whatever it is that keeps moving.
Yeah, we take a, you know, we'll probably have to do an exploratory excavation there and see what's there. And if if there's some voids, we could fill those um prior to this project so that, you know, the work from this project won't be compromised.
Yeah, I guess the question I have too, SB one funds, we're taking about half of the next year's for it. Is, are we enough to do all like our striping and digouts and?
Well, I mean, that that'll be a decision we'll have to make, cause yes, that would, it's it's probably gonna be either or, I would say. Cause you know, we fund digouts, there's striping, we do culvert repair and replacement under SB one. So those things, you know, those will be choices we'll have to to make when we um when we come to that point, you know. But again, we'll have the these numbers, but hopefully this job will get bid out in January or February at the very latest. And so we'll have, we'll know what's in front of us dollar-wise.
Now, just because we don't get it done next year, doesn't mean the digouts and whatnot can't be done the following year. SB one money keeps coming in, and that's what we're relying on for future.
Right, yeah.
So um it just kinda gets postponed.
No, I under- I understand that, yeah.
But if you do it.
One thing, one thing I would would.
It does exhaust more of that SB one money that could be spread in different places of the county too.
Oh, it does. It's it's always the the, you know, where do you put your resources?
Uh Supervisor Nettow, were you, you had something?
Yeah, I think too, as far as option two does does raise the roadway roadway profile, and that's that's always a problem. Um and there's a lot of businesses out there. It's kind of a pretty big economic engine for the county. So I I can see where probably option three, if we can figure out a way to get the the dumb dollars work is probably your best bet.
No, and and also, uh you mentioned, you know, the businesses and and property owners that are out there. We've, we'll do some outreach with them. We've sent, we've already sent them letters, kind of introducing them to the project and let them know that what's gonna happen. Um I've I've been in contact with the Vintners Association, the person who does their public outreach, puts together information and newsletters. Um I know we've should, there should have been something gone out on that already, and we can move forward. I envision, you know, having either through direct um contact with property owners or maybe having a a a public meeting where we can gather information from them as far as what challenges we have in providing them access. Cause yes, it's a road project and there are gonna be times when we're working right in front of the driveway. There's just no way around it. You know, if they're, if we can determine from them if there's better days or better times of the days, we can do that and try to minimize the impacts to their businesses, we'll try to do that. Um but I'm not gonna promise them that there'll be no impacts, cause that's unrealistic. And so, you know, I I like to tell people, road construction, everyday life, just don't mix. It's, they don't go together very well.
Would night work be possible?
It would be possible, I think. Um I don't know what the cost increment would be for that. Um and you've got some noise. I mean, there are residences out there, it's not just businesses, so.
Right.
You know, we can't work all night.
Yeah, you, then you just end up with different people complaining.
Right.
It's cause it is very loud, uh filling operations.
Well, it sounds like the board is favorable to option three.
Yes.
Uh Supervisor Nettow?
Yeah, and I have one more question on that. You're looking at a four and a four and a half inch lift of hot asphalt. Do you, is that stronger than the two inches with a six-inch cold recycled in place? Or I mean, could you, could you maybe drop that a little bit and bring that cost down some? Or would it be minimal as far as going a three and a half inch uh lift?
Yeah, I mean, it would reduce, we could reduce the the lift thickness, but it would reduce our design life. So.
Okay.
We're at twenty years now. We could come down to three and a half, but we might be in the fifteen-year design range for that, so.
Yeah, probably not, yeah.
Not in this county.
Okay, thank you.
No, I very much for the 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 three, cause this is, this is super infrastructure. This is one of the things that I've always wanted for this county is to to get, step forward and uh and increase our better parts of our infrastructure. And this is, this I think is a great step in that aspect.
I don't I don't disagree, I'm just looking, we got a lot of roads falling apart.
Oh, I don't disagree, but you know, this is a main travel road, you know, the one next one that, you know, I would love to see is is um uh Shake Ridge Road, you know, this would be.
I find no argument here.
Yeah, this would be a a wonderful thing, you know, for the future of Shake Ridge Road.
That's turned into a collector, but it's also a region that provides a significant amount of tax revenue to the county.
Right.
Um, let's see, um the money we've set aside, how much is that? How much have we got set aside for this already that we've been rat-holing?
Um, I'm, what I'm using is the PG new rural twenty proceeds. That was one point, roughly one point nine million dollars. That was one point, roughly 1.9 million dollars.
Were, were we setting aside a hundred thousand a year through the, the budget process already? Or in the SB one, from SB one money?
Uh.
We did.
Yes.
And how much, that's what I want to know. How much is that? That should be three or 400,000.
That was around 300,000. Uh, I have to go back because of how we discussed that allocation. Um, as we, this last go around, we kind of switched things up as far as how we allocated our SB one funds. Um, so I'd have to go back and look at that. I, that may have, those funds that there was for a micro-surfacing for Shenandoah. I think those were probably put towards that, the, um, that Buena Vista project, kind of a shell game.
Okay. Maybe just come up with that answer first.
Sure. Sure.
With that, Supervisor Axe, your thoughts?
Um, no, it's, it seems like, uh, you know, it'd be wise to invest and do a good job. So, um, I think option three would be, uh, the way to proceed. So, uh, if you like, I can make that as a motion.
That's fine. There's second to that.
Second.
So it's moved and seconded to direct our.
Supervisor Brown, I think.
To, uh, direct Mr. Vila to, uh, per pursue, proceed with oper, with the option three.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or public comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Roll call. Roll call.
Thank you. Chairman Forster?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown and Mr. Vila. And you're still up for our next item, 3B, State Route 88, Pine Grove Project Update.
Yeah, this, it was suggested to just kind of give a brief update on where we are on that project. Um, I think the last time we talked, uh, we had a couple of, um, uh, utility coordination, things that we had to button up. Um, because basically plans and specs, the vast majority are, are completed and, and ready to go. All our real estate acquisition has been completed. Um, um, yeah, we're, we're, we're at the last stages of utility coordination. Um, we, uh, been worked, we had, at that time, we talked about, it was PG&E and AWA. Um, we, uh, PG&E is, um, which I was surprised with. They, they came up and, you know, they were, they've been kind of in disarray because they have had a lot of issues on their plate over the last several years and, and have had a lot of turnover and what have you. But, uh, once we got them focused on this, this, um, they've come through and they've gotten a lot of their issues, all of their issues resolved. And, you know, and their, no, their pole relocations will happen during, during the project. But they've got the coordination issues and we've got those things worked out with them.
No question on that. Um, you're talking pole relocation. Have they ever talked about maybe undergrounding it as part of, part of it?
I don't, I'm not aware of any of those, uh, conversations. That's, that's a pretty expensive, uh, undertaking. And I don't, not sure how PG&E approaches that. Um.
You might, you might bounce that on. You might bounce that off them because I know they're trying to go underground with a lot of their lines. And it might be an opportunity, a good opportunity for them to do it, do it there.
Yeah. I mean, I know they're undergrounding lines where they have a lot of, uh, 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 danger for potential, you know, head off, uh, fire, uh, danger and such. Uh, in my past experience with undergrounding, usually there needs to be some sort of incentive for the utility to do so. Um, like, uh, in areas, say if there's redevelopment and it's, if it's a blighted area and if you have this redevelopment, you're going to bring in new businesses and such, which would give new customers for the utility. So a lot of times they will go, it's all right, we'll go ahead and we'll either pay for the undergrounding or contribute to it. Cause they know down the road, it's going to pay off for them because they're going to have more businesses there or industry that's, that is be, you know, as ratepayers, they'll, they'll get their money back. So usually there's a, an incentive, if there's an incentive for the utility to do so, that's what kind of spurs that. And like what they're doing now, they're undergrounding, uh, lines up in the up country more, you know, to prevent future, uh, fire issues. In this corridor, I'm not sure if that incentive is there for them. I, I don't want to speak for them. That's just my opinion.
We have reps in the back of the room from PG&E. I'm not sure if you're prepared to speak on this. If, if not, then just stay seated. So.
But yeah, that's, it's pretty costly. I mean, it'd be great.
I mean, just run that by him.
Um, and we're currently in, in, working with, uh, the Amner Water Agency. Um, uh, it, they're the, the last ones that we're dealing with. Um, there's been some continuity issues over the course of time as far as, um, through the process. There's, there's certain documents that are set up and sent out to all the utilities. It's pretty well predefined. Uh, it's a, it's a Caltrans utility coordination process. And there, there's been turnover and such. So there's things that fall into the cracks. People who have gotten the initial correspondences don't work there anymore. And so, you know.
I think we're getting that resolved. So.
So from that standpoint, um, when I mentioned we're doing some catch-up and such, that's what I'm kind of referring to. And, and it's a certainly group effort between us and the AWA to, to try to get these things resolved. Um, and, um, you know, hopefully we can push forward and get this done because we're still shooting for a 2023, at least start of construction. But, uh, for that to happen, we have to get this stuff, utility coordination button up here in the next month or so.
What is your request today to, I just says request and possible action to approve, um, working with a administration management inspection aimed through construction?
Um, the, this was really more for information, you know?
Okay.
And, um, but you know, always leave that option out there for the board if they wanted to provide any direction that they felt necessary. But this is more for information. But yeah, we're, we're currently working with the AWA staff to try to get these things resolved. And, you know, to, to determine the liability that's out there, um, with their, with the facilities that need to be, um, relocated or adjusted.
And I want, one, one question, pardon me. Question I had, I think I talked to either maybe you or John Genny, maybe both. Some of the driveways, it seemed like they were, wasn't just scales, kind of trying to make it work. But some of the driveways seem pretty small and they're side by side. And I know some of those driveways, you can make them, they'd be almost like a joint driveway. Because you made them wider, it'd be a lot easier. People get on and off that highway quicker.
That's true. It, it would from that standpoint. Um, the, the issue that you, well, you have with a wide driveway is that you, there, your, your, traffic is not channeled to a specific point. And so people are kind of aiming at a wider area and there could be more, actually more conflicts with people entering and leaving a driveway if they've got in this big wide area. They're all shooting for a different spot and they could be shooting for the same spot. Or if you have a more uniform driveway width, everyone knows you're going to come in on the, on that right-hand side and, and the people are leaving on, on the right-hand side. So not kind of just choosing a spot in a, in a wide open, um, you know, a wider driveway. Um, one thing would be good if you've got driveways. We're really kind of past that point now, in all honesty, design wise. But, you know, sometimes you can combine driveways, have joint driveways, which would require, you know, uh, uh, joint driveway easement between property owners. But, uh, um, I think at this point, and, you know, the.
That'd probably get.
Design's probably down the road. It's, we're past that point already.
That's what I kind of figured that. Okay.
Yes. Any other board questions? Any public comment? Numbers, Supervisor Axe, you okay with this? Ms. Labenco, one comment behind you. Good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Labenco. I had a quick question actually, um, came to me in your previous, um, item. But you opened and closed public comment so quickly and I wasn't paying that close of attention, I guess. So anyways, I was just curious about.
I actually go pretty slow.
Um, I had a question about traffic studies, um, when you were talking about the Shenandoah Road project and this project too. I've been trying to find the most recent traffic studies that we've done and I'm finding them for 2009. And I was curious if we've done a traffic study since then or if we had one, you know, kind of scheduled.
Well, Ms. Labenco is correct. That's, we used to do traffic studies and conduct them in-house. And so we had, uh, staff that were able to go out and put the counters out and, and do traffic studies. Um, uh, we don't have that staff anymore. So if we need to do traffic studies, we'll have to, to hire that out. It wouldn't be a bad idea to get a, a feel for, you know, where our traffic volumes are on some of our roadways. There is a, um, I don't know if you've heard of a program, it's called Streetlight. And what it is, is a, um, where, where, um, there's a company out there that follows your cell phone. And they can, based on the GPS of your cell phone, they know where you're driving. And so we've, um, through ACTC, they, they've secured, um, some traffic data for the county and the cities here in, in, in the county, um, through this. And they, so we've got on certain spots, we've got some updated, uh, traffic counts, um, from 2019 and 2020. Um, which 2020 counts are going to be, uh, uh, kind of thrown off because that was at the beginning of the pandemic. Um, but you can see, actually what it does show you is what the decrease in traffic was from 19 to 20. It was like a 20 to 25% decrease in traffic in various locations. But so in, in some locations, we do have that data. And you can say, well, how, how accurate is that data? Um, they've gone through, the people have collected this data. They've gone through and, 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 and not necessarily here, but just in general, in locations and done actual count. At the same time, they were collecting data and they found that the, that they correspond within five to 10%. So, um, you know, actually an actual count is going to be better because you're actually counting what passed the point. But for a five to 10% difference, that kind of gives you a pretty good, um, blush of what's going on. Um, but that is something we should, I can probably look at and, and maybe, uh, target some areas that'd be good to have our, you know, uh, updated information just so that we can, we know what's happening in our, in our county road system as far as, uh, uh, traffic volumes.
And you did sit up on Shenandoah Road two just to, uh, for a period of time, just to count the trucks, right?
Yes.
So it's, it was about what, uh, 25 or 30 an hour?
Yeah. When I, when we were worried about the, um, the hauling activities, uh, with the Caldo fire cleanup. And yeah, in, in an hour's time, it was in that range, 20, 20 to 30, in around 25. Um, you know, 10-wheelers that were rolling through river pines.
Have you heard anything on our damage claim yet from Kerry Cycle?
I have not. I've asked for an update and I've kind of gotten crickets. So I need to rattle the chains again.
Okay. Um, seems like there's no other questions. So thank you for the update.
Richard.
On that project.
Right. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. We move on to item 3C, discussion of possible action relative to PG&E tree removal practices and the issues caused by leaving trees and branches larger than four inch diameter on site. And Supervisor Brown, this was, um, your item that you requested to have put on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Um, and I've also asked Dylan George, who's coming up to the podium right now. This all started with, um, kind of a, a multiple operations that have happened. Um, I've had the Reese family, the James family, um, other families have contacted me, um, on the fact that PG&E has left some, uh, equipment. Now, at least the James family, um, the, uh, eight-foot, four-foot round logs are, are starting to be cut up and removed. So that is, that has started. But this is something that's gone in the up country. You know, we've had the Ledger Dispatch complain about it. We've, you know, I've contacted Dylan numerous times about this process. But we need, it seems like PG&E and their contractors are in disconnect. Cause I've had the briefing from, uh, Dylan and, uh, another gentleman of Mike Webb that say, hey, you know, when the ACRT comes to us, just ask them to move all the trees. Well, as conversations that I've had, it's not happening. Or people are not aware that PG&E has requested to, um, put out any, you know, anything that's larger than four inches that they, they will remove. You know, people, a lot of people think it's all their own, you know, problems. Um, and so what I'm looking for is conversations with PG&E and their contractors to see where we can get this fixed. Because your guys are the ones that are, are requesting the trees to be brought down. You know, the owners of the property are not. This is you taking care of your easement. And so what I'm really looking for is to make sure that we can, you know, we're not creating a, a fire load up here. Cause it's, you know, there's a, this last February, I, you know, put trees out in a, a baseball field, over 800 tons. So yes, we are trying to pull our load of trees out of the hills. And so I need to make sure that PG&E is doing the same thing by not, um, creating more of a fire hazard up there.
I'll say I've had a very similar issue as Supervisor Brown. Um, I've talked to Dylan George numerous times. Dylan is good to work with.
Yes.
But it seems like PG&E is not mandated to remove those big logs, which I think is a problem because they're, in my opinion, it's kind of creating a fire hazard out there. And a lot of homeowners, if you've got a small, a small tree, yeah, most homeowners can cut it up. You start getting those three, two, three, four-foot, um, sections, people are incapable of cutting them up. So they sit there and they rot and, and they're a fire problem. And not only that, PG&E is going out there. Some of the local loggers would probably take some of the logs, but they cut them up into eight and 10-foot chunks and nobody's going to take them.
Probably everything we don't want to do is, uh, on the AFPD property going in the growing camp, there's a mini log deck there now that the contractor has. So I, I don't think that's what we want sitting there either. Um, Dylan?
Yeah. So I have a presentation here. Hopefully address most of these issues. Um, we'll take questions at the end of.
Can you introduce both your?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So, uh, good morning, Chairman Forster, members of the board. My name is Dylan George. I'm local government affairs representative for PG&E. I have with me Matt Leedy today. He's also with our government affairs department, deals specifically with our vegetation management program. So between the two of us, we'll walk through this brief presentation. And then like I said, hopefully we'll address all your, your concerns and then take some questions as we go along. Um, so, you know, I've been here several times over the last few years to talk about wildfire safety. Um, I, I feel like a lot of progress has been made, um, with our system with, uh, you know, we didn't have a PSPS event last year. I'm going to knock on wood when I say that. Um, you know, I, I do think the, the trajectory is forward on this, but we certainly have some challenges. Um, we still, you know, have a, a good number of outages. Um, we have challenges with vegetation management. So happy to be here for an update on that. And I'll turn it over to Matt for the next few slides here. So go to advanced.
Do you hear me if I use this?
You two might want to switch places.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. If you could skip ahead to the next slide, please. I'm here to talk about, um, various vegetation program, um, vegetation management programs that we have set up to prevent wildfires. Uh, these include annual and additional inspections, uh, to remove dead, dying disease or defective trees that could harm power lines or equipment. Um, the first program I'm going to talk about is on the far left. Uh, this is a routine vegetation management that occurs on all electrical distribution lines and involves, uh, meeting important state standards and fire safety standards. Uh, this is conducted, uh, once a year and, um, adheres to several. This is conducted once a year and adheres to several standards. The first of which is that in high fire threat districts, we maintain a minimum clearance of four feet around the power lines and recommended minimum clearances of twelve feet or more at the time of pruning. So you'll see when we make our first pass, we go twelve feet out from our line. And that is to ensure that we maintain that four foot radius throughout the course of the year. In addition, we also have a drought and tree mortality response program. This is in response to the many years of drought that have weakened trees and made them highly susceptible to insect infestations. With the drought tree mortality program, we conduct additional inspections of trees along power lines and high fire threat areas with ground patrols and helicopters. And this occurs six months after the original routine annual inspection. As part of this program, as you'll see, we also cut down dead, diseased, dying or defective trees, primarily in areas, again, affected by the drought and bark beetle specifically. These are hazard trees that could fall on our lines should they fail. Finally, I want to talk about our enhanced vegetation management program. This is as well in the highest fire threat areas and is identified, this is the area where we conduct this, is identified by P G and E's wildfire risk model and expands on the risk mitigation work that we conduct in the two previous programs. It does exceed state standards for minimum clearances around power lines. And the primary difference between enhanced vegetation management and routine vegetation management is you'll see we go clear to sky. So it addresses all overhanging limbs and prunes to the same twelve foot radius with the intent of keeping it maintained for four feet. But again, ground to sky with enhanced vegetation management. E V M work, enhanced vegetation management is one of the D program that offers wood haul. And this is where it is accessible, where it's safe and where there aren't any environmental restraints. Requires permission from the homeowners because, as I'll talk about in the next slide, that wood does belong to them. So with their permission, with enhanced vegetation management, if it meets that criteria, we could haul away wood four inches or larger in diameter. And then we offer to scatter and further cut wood smaller than that, working with the property owner to do that.
Question on that.
Yeah, please.
When you send a person out to forums to do your vegetation management, if they don't check any box, do you take away the wood or leave the wood?
We cannot take away the wood without their permission. Four inches and larger in diameter because it does belong to that property owner. So we do require permission from the owner to take the wood.
Okay, now, this is what started all this. Again, this is Supervisor Brown. I'm also First Mace Meadow Water Association Chair. And I had A C R T call me up and said, this is your property and we need permission to enter the property and cut down some trees, they're hazard trees. I said, sure, but I need you to take everything away. And they flat out said, no, we're not taking anything away. We're not taking any wood away other than four inches or less. And then I told them, well, then you do not have permission to enter the property. You know, because that is just, you know, I'm entering into a firewise community. I need as a, as a community based utility, we need to provide the best, safest area that we can. But, you know, not taking away this material. And I had this conversation three times. I had the next supervisor and then the next supervisor above that give me a call and say, hey, we're, you know, we're not taking it away. Well, then you don't have permission to enter my property. That is what has really started all this. And that is firsthand, you know, myself, you know, being contacted by A C R T. And that's what's really started all this. So what you just briefed just now is not happening.
It it does depend on the program with under our enhanced vegetation management program, we do offer wood haul. Under the other programs, we do not.
You know, but that's, that is a problem. You know, you're saying you're trying to be safe, but you're not. You know, public safety is, you know, getting rid of this material. We have thousands of pines up there, you know, if if it was oak or any other material, yeah, people would take it. You know, there's, you know, Caltrans has been digging out, you know, two million dollar worth of project along Highway Eight. You know, all the oak is being pulled, but the pine and everything else is still sitting alongside the road. Nobody's touching that pine. And that's the same thing, you know, everywhere else. So just to create and then, you know, to add on to this, you know, my maintenance workers are all retired water work guys. They can't handle dealing with that big of, you know, logs and stuff. So what, you know, you're not providing a service to something that we pay for. You know, I have undergrounded utilities coming to my own home, but I still had a six hundred and twenty-three dollar P G and E bill last month. You know, so, you know, these are still things that I I pay for, you know, the services that I'm requesting. And I'm assuming everybody else in my neighborhood are requesting the same thing. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. No, no problem. If we could skip ahead to the next slide, this has to do with the state regulatory requirements that we are bound to. We are required to maintain clearances and address the, and abate dead, diseased, dying or defective trees that may pose a hazard to our facilities under the C P C General Order ninety-five, Rule thirty-five and the California Public Resource Code forty-two ninety-two and forty-two ninety-three. Also, it's important to note, under Article twelve, the California Constitution, local discretionary authority over public utility projects is preempted by the C P C's exclusive jurisdiction. Because of this, P G and E's vegetation management projects are not subject to local conditional use permits, tree removal permits, or other similar local discretionary permits. Having said that, P G and E, of course, obtains all necessary ministerial encroachment permits for work being performed in public right of ways. Finally, I wanted to talk a little bit more in depth about our enhanced vegetation management program. As you can see, we completed a hundred and eight line miles in two thousand and twenty-one. We have thirty-eight point eight miles planned for two thousand and twenty-two, which you could see, I guess that's the turquoise line. And of what we have planned, we have completed two so far. So we still have a lot of enhanced vegetation management work to do in Amador County this year. Are there any questions on our E V M program? With that, we're going to move into system hardening and some other programs that we offer to help prevent wildfires.
Yeah, so Dylan George, once again, in addition to talking about tree removal, we wanted to talk about some of the other things that we're doing for wildfire safety. And then hopefully, you know, forward looking, some of the things that are going to help us need to remove less trees and, you know, be out here less on a longer term kind of basis thinking ahead. So you you may be familiar, I'm sure you are, that the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, P G and E CEO announced the plan to underground ten thousand miles in the high fire threat areas throughout our service territory. So this is a really big undertaking. We're at the very beginning of it. It would be the largest undergrounding effort by any utility, you know, as far as we know anywhere in the world. So, you know, it is quite an undertaking. We, the the main driver for this, of course, is reducing wildfire risk. But it's also going to have other benefits. It's going to reduce the need for tree trimming, tree removals. It's going to reduce the need for public safety related power outages. So we, our goal is to have thirty-six hundred miles completed by two thousand and twenty-six. Just to put that into some perspective, we have a hundred and seventy-five miles planned this year. That's throughout our entire service territory. So you could see the ramp up is, is, you know, just at the beginning stages of that. So with that in mind, I'm going to talk specific to Amador County on the next slide. So we have just two projects this year. You may be familiar with these. One of them is in Sutter Creek. This, both of the projects I'm going to talk about include an undergrounding component and also an overhead wire system hardening component. So one of them is in the Sutter Creek area near Ridge Road. The primary driver of this project is that it's going to protect the city of Sutter Creek from future possible public safety power shut offs. It's also going to protect the Amador Water Agency headquarters on Ridge Road from future public safety power shut offs. We are currently in progress on that. It's a, it's a pretty big project. It is mostly overhead system hardening, but there is a couple of spots of of undergrounding as well. Similarly, up the hill Supervisor Brown, I'm sure is well aware, in the Buckhorn area. Another project that is is mostly a lot of overhead system hardening, but does include a little bit of undergrounding. So those are the projects happening right now. Next year, you could see on the screen there, we have twenty-one miles planned. It is still in the planning stages, that project. It is north of Pioneer on our Pine Grove Circuit there. So we will have more to discuss on that, you know, as we get more of it planned out. And then I wanted to address the the last agenda item. I would like to speak to Mr. Vella and see if there's something we could do. I don't know. I'm not familiar with the particular project that he was talking about. So I don't know if it would be a good candidate for undergrounding, but certainly always things that we want to discuss with our county partners. So moving on to system hardening here. So again, you know, a lot of work being done and and I'm sure you see it all. System hardening, we've talked about this before. It is where we replace the the existing poles with, a lot of them that we're doing here are what we call class one wood poles. They're taller, larger in diameter treated poles. We replace the the wire with a thicker coated wire that we refer to in the industry as tree wire. The idea being that hopefully if something were to hit that wire, it would be hardier, sturdier, you know, have a better time of of surviving that. So we have a lot of these projects going on. We, again, I talked about the two main ones that we have going on this year. You could see up there, two thousand and twenty-one, really, it's two thousand and eighteen through twenty-one. We've created, we've had a lot of these projects be successful throughout the county. I've been in here before, you know, asking about the road permits and that kind of thing to do this work. So, you know, we we appreciate the county's cooperation and we appreciate your residents' cooperation because a lot of times these are pretty impactful and, you know, they do require us to block roadways and create traffic hazards. But, you know, in the end, we get a better system. We also have a project on, this is not shown on the screen here, but in Volcano, Shakeridge Road area that we're looking at for hopefully the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. Again, an overhead system hardening project, you know, weather permitting, hopefully we'll get that done before the next fire season. So we, oh, I also wanted to mention in terms of the undergrounding, you know, again, the the ramp up of this is is fairly steep. But we do plan two thousand and four to two thousand, sorry, two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-six. We do plan hundreds of miles of undergrounding within Amador County. So you will see as we get these these future plans scoped out, you will see a good amount of the work happening in Amador. So, you know, we're going to need to to work together on that. And, you know, you will probably hear a lot from me and a lot from other P G and E folks in the coming years, you know, as we work together with the county on that. So, next slide, let me get. Yeah, I believe that is it. So happy to try to address any questions you may have.
Well, again, you know, that's a nice dog and pony show, excuse my terminology. But it's not helping our core problem here. You know, it's getting rid of the material that's on people's property that you guys felt. You know, I'm not asking you to go outside your scope of thing. But when there's, you know, a tree that you identify that needs to be dropped. So part of the problem here is a resident, let's say, doesn't have a fireplace. Well, they can't even burn it if they want it. You have a log sitting there. How do they get rid of it? You know, there's fundamental things that you guys, you and your contractors have access to that a normal home resident does not. You know, you know, a skip loader, dump trucks, large trailers. Any of this material is is stuff that you guys have access to that a normal homeowner does not. And that's the huge amount of our problem here, is getting rid of this material. It's, you know, when I did my my pile up, you know, up at Pioneer Park, there was people coming out with logs that they said, hey, this is what P G and E left me. Thank you for doing this. Because ACES won't take a log. ACES won't take, you know, any large material because they can't deal with it either. But you, as you and your contractors, do have access to it. You have access to the the old cedar mill, you know, where you could pile material up there and then have a grinder come in and and take care of it. So you do have access, you know, that are fundable and accessible, which a normal home resident does not. And that's what I'm really looking at to see what we can do in the future. You know, we, you know, I have a lawsuit here sitting there from the county of Santa Cruz and, you know, going after you guys for virtually the same problem from the, what was it? I don't remember what the C Z U fire, I don't know what that corresponded to, but.
Two thousand and twenty, I believe.
Yeah, but I'm not asking for anything more, and I'm hoping this board will agree with me, is I just want to help my residents get rid of this material. You know, it's just a simple process of getting rid of the material. Now, if somebody wants to keep it, you know, I I think the the A C R T, in my opinion, should reverse the process. Hey, we're going to chop up everything four inches. Do you want to keep the six inches of bore or we're going to take it? You know, that process to me should be changed, not that, hey, I'm not taking anything over four inches and walking away. That's where this major problem is coming from. Glenn, did you want to speak on anything on this?
I I can address a couple.
Okay.
So, you know, we we want to remove the wood if it qualifies for that and if we have the homeowner's permission. I mean, what what you just said there, that, you know, the the laws that were governed under by the P U C require that we have the property owner's permission because it is it is viewed as their property. You know, I I think I've worked with probably all of you over the the time that I've been in this job where you have, you know, constituents that have complaints about, you know, a slow process to remove wood. I think we're generally able to address those. It's not always perfect. I I wish it it could be better. You know, we have, we work with a lot of contractors out there. We have a lot of of line miles, you know, in this county and in others. And, you know, I I think we we do our best to try to address these things. You know, it it's not always going to be perfect, but, you know, I I just want to continue to work with you guys and.
And and I don't have a problem with P G and E. It's your contractors. I was bullied three times. They just didn't recognize who I was at the time I was being bullied to get this done. And ain't happening, sorry. And and my next step will either be to go to the C P U C or start telling my constituents to refuse any work from P G and E. And then that will only create more of a havoc.
It will.
But that havoc will eventually change something. So where do we go from here right now?
Well, as I said, I mean, I I want to continue to work with you. We 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 want to continue to remove the wood where it qualifies when we can. And, you know, the process is not always perfect, but.
And and, you know, you and I have worked on that numerous times and I don't have any problem with it, you know. You know, like I said, the Sid James property, you know, you're, you guys are taking that material out. You know, here's a four foot log, I mean, an eight foot long log, four foot in diameter, sitting on his driveway. You know, that they can't get one of their vehicles out of the driveway because it's, and it's been sitting there for a year. You know, they just didn't know to come to me to to get help.
Right.
You know, so that was, you know, so they've been fighting there. But all of this is stuff that shouldn't, I mean, if a log's on a piece of property for a period of time, I understand. Sometimes things get skipped over. You know, when Mario's first took over this project, they were taking everything. I didn't get any phone calls when Mario's first took over the project. They had the two grabber trucks and then, you know, they were probably about two weeks behind on grabbing material. And that's what I would tell residents, hey, they've got it all set up, sitting alongside the road. It's going to be gone in two, three weeks. You should be fine. And that's been fine, but all of a sudden now, the last four or five months, I've been getting these phone calls. They're not taking anything. They're not doing anything. So that's where we've come to a head right now.
I think it's been a problem even longer than that, Jeff, because if you go drive around the up country. Pardon me, but it's it's a pile of pickup sticks. I mean, there's a lot of logs out there. It's been ongoing problem for a long time. And you're saying only enhanced vegetation management is all that you're legally required to take.
That that's all that we're legally allowed to remove, right? Yes.
Okay, I think what you need probably, one thing to help a lot is on your form. If you made it a lot clearer, the logs will be left if you don't check this box. If you check this box, we were, we were removed if possible, that vegetation. Just going off memory, the form isn't real clear.
Well, there's not even on a form anymore. It's an iPad that they walk up to your door. You know, so it's not even a form, you know, that you're actually doing anymore. It's just an iPad. And then right now, they're starting him a phone call. I I did all my business just off a phone call.
Wow. It's a, it's a big problem. I mean, you guys got a fire problem. You're paying liability, damage is out. The county has a fire problem, so the homeowners. And you drive around the roads, there's just, there's a pile of logs all over. And and kind of like Jeff, I get people saying, I don't know what to do with this stuff. I can't cut it up. And nobody wants a pine. If you left it longer, you might have. a pine. If you left it longer, you might find, you might find people might take it, but they chop it up in small chunks and there's it. What's so, what's your answer to that?
I, you know, again, we, when we are allowed to remove the wood, we want to remove it. When we have the property owner's consent. I mean, you know, I can't speak to all of the situations up there. I think when I talk to you guys and you have one for me, we look into it. We see if we, if it's something that we are allowed to remove. You know, a lot of those may be situations where we didn't have property owner consent to remove the wood.
Oh, wait, so, I mean, Supervisor Brown said he's ready to give the permission, but they would not work with it.
And I'm working to try to address this specific issue. I understand he's had a bad experience.
We don't want specific issues. We want across the board.
Right. But what he said is contradictory to what you're saying, though, is he wants to give permission and they're saying we won't do it.
Right.
The matter of whether or not the wood qualifies for wood haul. And that's certainly something that, you know, when we receive the information, the address of the property owner who requests it, that we could look to see if it's qualified for wood removal. And if so, and if we have permission, that we could set up a timeline to do that.
Why wouldn't it qualify? Because it's too big, or?
No, because of the program that it falls under. So, if it's outside of enhanced vegetation management, that is, that is the one program.
But it's in a very high fire threat area.
Understood.
You know, so, this, this is just crazy, to be honest. It's got to qualify, or it's got to qualify for reimbursement, I guess, right?
Right, because, you know.
That's what it's coming down to, is money. If.
That's right, yeah.
If PG&E doesn't get reimbursed, they won't authorize it to be hauled off.
Yeah, you know, this, it's a ratepayer funded program. So, it's at the Public Utilities Commission's direction, just like all of our ratepayer funded programs are. So, it has to qualify under something that the Utilities Commission has told us to spend the ratepayer money to remove the wood on.
If it's normal clearing or drought related, like trees died, you're saying quite often that's not, doesn't qualify to be removed?
Right, correct, yeah.
Okay.
Now, I mean, you know, most of your county, as you're well aware, is high fire threat area. Most of it, I believe, would be enhanced vegetation management.
Pretty much the whole, but that's, why am I getting rebuffed?
Again, I'm trying to get a specific answer to.
Yeah.
I don't have that right now at the moment, but I'm working on that, too.
Greg, did you have any?
I was just gonna, you know, is there a way to get, like, some of the details? Like, how many trees that are taken out altogether? Not just trimming, you know, just the 12-foot trimming, but like, if you take out a tree, do you have data that shows what program it was taken under?
Yes, and that's something that I could get back to you on.
Okay.
Total, if I'm hearing you correctly, total number of trees removed and which program they fall under?
Yeah, because I'm curious, like, how many of the, like you just said, how many of the trees are under the enhanced maintenance that do qualify for removal? How many are the drought removal? I assume there's not a lot of trees that are removed under routine maintenance because you.
Yeah, you know, again, in your county, obviously, most of it would be enhanced because you are mostly, you know, tier two, tier three high fire threat areas.
Okay. So, I'd be curious to know the breakdown. And then, and then if you say that they, that it, you're not legally allowed to remove, like, if you take a drought, a dead tree because of, you're legally precluded, or you just don't get the funding? I mean, what's the difference?
It's not paid for under the ratepayer funded tree program, vegetation management program, right?
Okay.
That's your answer.
And that is not an answer people will accept.
Well, I don't think anybody's gonna be satisfied with the response today, but I need to take public comment. If there's any public comment on this issue?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Jay Fankelstein, 11305 Quail Drive in Pine Grove. Mr. Chair, Honorable Board, County Staff, thank you for hearing this matter. It is of significant impact to a number of homeowners. I have a picture here. I don't know if, unfortunately, this is, might I approach the board and just show it to you? This is what was left in my yard.
I can see it from here. It's big enough.
That looks like a big one.
Don't say anything until you go back to the microphone.
So, there were two seven-foot sections, about 30 inches in diameter, left there. And the issues, pieces, as you've indicated, Supervisor Brown, too large to handle safely without specialized equipment. In my case, these are very dangerous in that there are some pieces now that have been reduced in size, but I have the threat of them rolling down the hill through my house. And I don't want to use my $8,000 or $10,000 worth of deductible on my homeowners if that should go through. Also, there's the extra expense and visually undesirable, as well as you've indicated with the fire hazard. I still, I called repetitively with the PG&E program. I was under the impression that their mandate, when I read within their mission statement, was to leave only those things that are manageable for the homeowner. And I think there is a statement to that effect. I wasn't able to get internet to have that here, but I believe that is there. I was dealing with three different individuals at the PG&E vegetation reduction. And I will swear to you that if it wasn't 40 calls, it was 100 calls. Repetitively, can we get this cut into at least 24-inch sections? So, in some way, shape, or form, I can drag it out. Well, I was told, well, the contractor will only reduce it to maybe 48. And I said, how can I handle? I said, I have seven-foot sections. If you reduce that to a 30-inch by 48-inch section, I can't deal with that. And eventually, I, a gentleman came out, Naraj from Mario's, or said he was gonna come out, and they reduced it to about 22-inch sections. Now, I have these probably 250-pound-plus rounds that I'm going to have to lag and chain to an ATV or UTV side-by-side so they don't roll down the hill while I can drag it up. So, it's a huge problem visually, aesthetically, fire hazard. And as you've indicated, this was not my desire to have this tree taken out. So, we're left with your arguments that will hopefully help us get relief on this matter. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Maybe you could give your contact information to Mr. George and he could help you out.
Morning, Glenn.
Morning. Deputy County Counsel Glenn Spitzer. Just wanted to comment a few things. I had a similar experience with Mario's, asking them to remove it, and they wouldn't remove it. So, I had about 20 logs on my property, pine, three-plus diameter, three-foot plus, some of them. So, I just wanted to mirror your comments there. But it sounds like it's an issue that is not being strongly communicated to PG&E's contractors. I do want to touch on the settlement agreement that with, that Santa Cruz had with PG&E. So, Santa Cruz did file a complaint with the PUC against PG&E. They had several issues, but one of their issues was the vegetation removal. And the result, the settlement agreement required PG&E to remove the log upon request. And there were no conditions on it. It was, if, it didn't matter what area it was in or any type of other condition. If the request was made, PG&E was required under the settlement order to remove it. I just wanted to make that clear.
That was only in the burnt area, correct?
My understanding is that that was upon any request, anytime that PG&E cut and left vegetation there.
And that was part of the settlement.
That was part of it.
Anywhere in Santa Cruz County because of the settlement.
Because of the settlement agreement.
This is not case law, but it is something that the courts may pay attention to if Amador County filed a similar action?
Yes. There are, there's ample legal authority. Lot of it through implication. There's nothing that expressly deals in a focused way with this requirement to remove vegetation. But there's a lot of legal authority that you could rely on and I think make a pretty strong argument in the CPUC court.
What's interesting, too, in that settlement, it says in item B that PG&E will require property owners to opt into wood haul program and provide PG&E authorization consent to holy wooden brush, which is kind of interesting. It's almost saying, hey, you know, if we're to take this stuff out, we want you to let us remove it. Maybe Dylan looks like he wants to talk to that.
Well, we have a Zoom comment I'd like to take first.
Thank you, caller. Please identify yourself and go ahead when ready. Need to unmute yourself on your end.
Looks like you're unmuted.
Yes, hello. This is Jerry Poor from Pine Grove. And I wanted to address one thing regarding the tree trimmers. I drive around the county daily. I'm a real estate appraiser and I see these crews. And a number of times when these crews have left after lunch, I find literally hundreds of small one-shot tequila bottles left in the ditches all over our county. I've sent pictures to a couple of the supervisors regarding these tequila bottles being left out on the sides of our roadways. I took a couple of them into the Pine Grove Market where they confirmed, oh, yeah, the crews come in and buy these by the dozens almost daily. You know, it's one thing to leave wood in everybody's yard. It's another thing to leave trash all over our properties and all over our roadways. I'd like to know what PG&E intends to do about that.
All right, Dylan. I'm not sure you can do much about that, but.
Yeah, I mean, I would need, you know, something more specific to look into. We, if our contractors, you know, it's our responsibility to manage the contractors. If they're doing something wrong out there, we need to manage that. I mean, I can't speak to that, this, you know, I don't have specifics to speak to on this. We need to manage the contractors. And then I did want to address the previous comment. So, yeah, as you mentioned, we do have to have the property owner's consent to remove the tree. Again, that is the legal framework that we work under. It is the property owner's property. They have to consent to us to remove the tree. I was also gonna comment, I do believe, as Supervisor Onetto said, that Santa Cruz settlement was specific to the wildfire area.
Any other public comments? Not sure we're gonna do much about this today. Supervisor Brown, it's up to you whether you want to bring this back to the board and have council look at a similar action that was taken in Santa Cruz. Yeah, you know, I would like council to take a look at, you know, because it sounds like PG&E is kind of hands-tied until the CPUC says something. So, I'm looking at, you know, if we can give direction to staff to go down this rabbit hole a little bit farther if we can and see what we, you know, what we can pull back out. Because we need to do something, because there's just, there's too much material. You know, there's a lot of people have been pulling out their own trees. And then to have PG&E leave trees is just not a, not something we need. We need to go keep going on this. So, I'd like the favor of the board to allow County Council to continue on this process to see how we can, where we can go further down the road.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay with the board? Supervisor Ax, you okay with that?
Uh, yes, thank you.
And just item interest, too, you, I think we want it cleaned up as much as possible, but especially around people's homes. I mean, it's out in the wild blue yonder. People don't seem to mind so much. Maybe a little fuel problem, but that, trees die naturally too. But where we're seeing are the real big issues, people, PG&E goes in, drops trees in people's front yard, in their driveway, and they take the small stuff and leave it. I mean, some of these trees are four foot in diameter and people can't deal with them. And so, they either gotta pay a lot, they gotta, and trying to get a contractor to come in for one tree or two trees or whatever it may be is really expensive. If you've got a crew, they're like PG&E does, onsite, with all the proper equipment, it's a lot cheaper for them to do it right there and then. So, I think, I think there's a problem there. I don't know if PG&E doesn't want to do it, or if it's a contractor problem, not doing what you're supposed to do, but.
Comes down to money.
That's what it is.
I think it's, it is a money thing, but something needs to be looked at.
Supervisor Crue.
If I may indulge, from Dylan, I have another question for you, but I got a problem you can fix.
Those are my favorite kind of problems, yeah.
Hurry up and get to the podium. When you took your brief respite from PG&E, we met with Chris Bennett and some folks from Stockton about fixing Elektra Road.
Yeah.
And they were gonna do kind of a study and come up with, it's a difficult road. We, two hours, it's a one-way in, it's gonna take forever. And we haven't heard anything since. Now that you're back, I was hoping maybe we could rekindle that fire.
Yeah, let me, I believe that we do have the study and I have shared it with some of the staff. Let me look.
Oh, they did it?
Let me double-check and I'd be happy to share that with you.
Is that where Elektra Road's maybe slipping a little bit, kind of?
It was just all but unpassable.
Talking about resurfacing.
Yeah.
Because it is a disaster.
And even PG&E admitted is tearing their equipment up going in and out of there.
And Dylan, don't get me wrong. I love working with you. You, you know, we've had great working relationship, so.
Thank you, likewise.
And so, but, you know, somehow we need to get part of this and part of this fixed.
Understood.
Thank you.
I agree that Jeff said Dylan's been very good to work with, but you're, there's a problem and you're the guy, so.
I hear you all. I absolutely, you know, I want to address concerns as much as I can.
Dylan, you might share that with Richard Veela because he was in on that, that study.
Okay.
He was involved in that.
That's three things I need to talk to him about, so I will do that. I will follow up, yes.
All right, thank you.
But you've got to understand, our point of view, too, Supervisor Brown, is that you're fixing one problem, but you're creating another by leaving those trees in place. So, and it sounds like it all comes down to the money like it usually does, so. Okay, board's gonna take a recess until 11 o'clock, so you have 10 minutes. so, um, now you have ten minutes.
...
This meeting back to order. Go to item three D. Recorder's office, discussion of possible action relative to approval of the clerk recorder's signature on a system upgrade agreement to digital reel with BMI imaging systems to implement requirements set forth by Assembly Bill fourteen sixty-six. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any. It's, we're paying for it out of trust money. It's required because of the bill passage and so we're moving forward.
Any questions?
I was wondering why I wasn't on consent myself.
Well, I was kind of hoping it was, but it's not, so.
I just love coming before us.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing else going on, yeah.
No. I do have one question. I'm looking at the, the list, appendix A search terms.
Mm-hmm.
So you have to take out any reference to him, her, all of that?
No, if it restricts. People from, I'm looking, I'm going to the list here. Those are search words because it's an OCR search. So the computer goes through and they put these in there as a way to find when there is restrictive language. So once these words have been identified, then they look and see if it looks like restrictive language. And then we go through the process of them giving that list to me and then I give it.
And, and this is restrictive language of racial or sex or anything else to that?
Any discriminatory language.
How come, it says, um, woman, female in there? How come they don't have man, male?
That is a good question, except there was a timeframe where women weren't allowed to have property. And so I think that is probably why that was one of the search criteria. But that's a good question for, for those folks.
I'm just trying to understand. I don't understand a lot of things that are going on today. All right, any, uh, more questions? Any public comment? Are you none, board action? Move to approve?
Second.
Move and second it to agree, to approve the agreement for twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars from the Recorder's Modernization Trust Fund to fund the upgrade. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Thank you Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
All right, most carries, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you ladies.
I hope you enjoyed our discussion on trees.
Enlightening.
All right, item three E, discussion of possible action relative to clarification of action taken during the budget approval. Due to some conflicting statements from staff and last minute changes, the intended actions were unclear. Also, the approval of the budget resolutions was omitted from the motion to approve. Ms. Riley.
Uh, supervisors, I, I apologize for having to bring this back to you, but, uh, during my narrative, I was unclear. I made a couple of statements that conflicted with themselves and as such, it's unclear exactly what I asked you to do and, uh, ultimately what you did. So, uh, to clarify that, we're just going to lay it out again and, um, and ask for your approval of that. So we've got the bullet points there. Uh, I don't think we need to go through it again. Uh, but if you would just, uh, uh, you know, just blanket approve those, I think, uh, I think we're, we're good and Tacey has the, the direction, uh, that she needs to, to go forward. Um, and I will not let that happen again.
Well, and you're, under your recommendations, just, um, for public verification, approve the two budget resolutions and confirm that the following actions were intended during the budget hearing. The budget is approved with the one million nine hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars that is designated as going to reserve, actually going to the payroll reserve. The amount set aside for the jail from the ARPA savings is increased from one point six to two point one million. The jail reserve account is created with the authority granted to the auditor to transfer funds into this account with the already allocated funding at the appropriate time.
At the appropriate time, yeah.
That's right. So that crystal clear to the board?
Yes.
Any public comments? And can I have a, uh, motion, please? I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Um, okay, Supervisor Axe on the second.
And that includes the, the resolutions, correct?
The resolutions would be included in that too.
Yes.
Uh, that was under the recommendations that I just read, approve the two budget resolutions. So with that, uh, roll call.
Thank you Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
I was really, aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
All right, most carries five zero. Only a couple items left. Three F, Board of Supervisors, discussion of possible action relative to appointment of primary and alternate delegate to the twenty-two, twenty-three C-SAC Board of Directors. This needs to be done before the annual conference, which is coming up in November. Um, I've spoken to Supervisor Brown about this. He's okay with leaving the, um, positions the way they are at this time, correct?
Yes, correct.
So, uh, with that, uh, it would mean Forster as the primary and Brown as the alternate. Any, uh, discussion?
As long as, uh, you folks are happy and.
Right.
Frank is happy, so I'm fine with it.
That's why I wanted to talk about it, so with him before, make sure it was okay. I didn't tell him I was going to be the, uh, primary either. Okay, any, uh, public comments? And I need a motion to this effect?
I'll move to approve the board selections for C-SAC for twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Move and second it to, uh, put those two names in as, uh, primary and alternate. Any further discussion? And roll call vote?
Thank you Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
Most carries five zero. Our last agenda item, three G, the minutes. They had, uh, quite a few minor corrections, but then a couple, what I would call more major corrections with Supervisor Axe, who was, uh, absent from the meeting, actually I think making a motion and a second on, uh, two different actions, which, uh, I don't think he, he was absent, I don't think he can take those actions, so. Then I had a bunch of minor corrections.
Likewise, and we went back about two thousand years almost in one of the.
Right.
One of the actions.
Yep.
But yeah, I make a motion to approve, uh, minutes with just some minor changes and those, um, the two actions where Axe is listed when he's absent.
Second.
Sorry, second. Who, who made the second? Okay. Supervisor Onetto seconded, Supervisor Brown, roll call.
Thank you Chairman Forster.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Supervisor Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
And Supervisor Axe.
Aye.
All right, most carries five zero. With that, our meeting is concluded. Closed session has already been handled, so the board will meet again in, um, look for the date, October eleventh at nine AM. So we are adjourned.